Good morning, welcome to the Expanded States of Consciousness World Summit. We are so excited to be launching the summit this morning. I hope some of you have already started watching the amazing video presentation today. And this is going to be a guided practice session. My name is Dr. Fleet Mall and I'll be leading a session of what I call neurosomatic mindfulness, a deeply embodied approach to meditation. And then following me, my friend Michael Stone will lead a session of transformative breathwork, his neurodynamic breathwork. And then he and I will come together and we'll do a little bit of a live update, just telling you what's happening on the summit today. So again, thank you so much for being here. And it's just really exciting to be finally launching the summit. This has been a long, we've been working on this for a long, long time. We'll get started here in just a second. And just making sure we have all the technology working correctly. Okay, alright, good. So if you would, find a posture, whatever kind of seating arrangement you have that works for you. Find a posture that you feel relatively uplifted, upright, and at the same time relaxed and sustainable and awake and naturally dignified and so forth. And of course, if for any reasons of physical limitations, you need to do this practice of lying down or standing up or leaning against the back of a chair for support, please do what works for you. But if you are able to sit up with a relatively upright, uplifted posture, that can be helpful, good spinal alignment and so forth, shoulders relaxed. For this practice, I teach both eyes open and eyes closed practice. For this practice to begin with, I'm going to invite you to close your eyes if that's comfortable for you. Because we're going to be really focusing on the body and especially the internal landscape of the body. And so it may be helpful for you to connect with that by closing your eyes. So I want to just take a minute to describe a little bit about this practice and then we'll just do it. So again, it's called neurosomatic mindfulness. It's a deeply embodied, neuroscientifically informed approach to classic mindfulness and awareness meditation. And really a very direct approach to both healing and awakening. Because it takes us so deeply into the body and involves the body in such a direct way. And we'll be developing an internal neurobiofeedback loop, which will allow our own body-mind system to learn to auto-regulate into profound states of attention stabilization, which then gives us access to profound states of awareness and deep healing, coherence, resonance, and so forth. And we'll begin by, like with most meditations, with self-directed self-regulation. In other words, we'll be making a gentle effort to bring ourselves into the present moment with the focus on the body. But over time, we'll be tapping into the body and the mind, the nervous system, the brain's internal capacity to auto-regulate itself into deep attention stabilization and profound states of awareness, which have tremendous potential for healing and awakening. So this practice itself will serve as an access point to expanded states of consciousness or expanded states of awareness and all their potential for healing trauma, healing attachment wounds, for expanding our awareness and literally for awakening, for liberation. At the same time, this practice is a wonderful tool or practice for integrating other types of expanded state experiences, which we're going to be exploring on the summit. Whether they are access to psychedelics, psychedelic consistent therapy, shamanism, plant medicine, transformative breathwork, ecstatic dance, hypnotherapy, music, chant, and so forth. So meditation, and in particular this form, neurosomatic mindfulness, is both a direct access point to expanded states of consciousness and a wonderful integration tool for integrating other expanded state experiences. Okay, so that's enough and we'll jump right in. So having established your posture, I invite you again to close your eyes and to begin gently bringing your attention to the body. To begin with, perhaps bringing your attention to whatever physical sensations are most prominent for you. That could be the contact points between your body and the chair or the cushion, whatever your seating arrangement is. It could be the weight of your clothing, the contact between your clothing and your skin, texture of your clothing. It could be sensations related to the air temperature where you are or any movement of the air across exposed skin surface areas. And of course, the passage of air across the nostrils and/or putter lips with each in-breath and out-breath. In referencing body, I'd like to make it clear that what I'm pointing to is the landscape of actual tactile physical sensation that we call body. We'll be working with physical sensation on the surface of the body, all across the body from head to toe. Our skin is one vast sensory organ and we experience that sense of touch on the skin through what is called extroception or external perception. We'll also be working with the internal landscape of perception, of sensation. Our ability to feel the body from the inside out as it were, activating our capacity for interoception, internal perception or interoceptive awareness. In both cases, we're focused on actual tactile physical sensation. Now, why do I make that point? We have incredibly powerful conceptual minds, one of our great gifts as human beings. And our conceptual mind can be an optical to awakening, to direct experience. Because our brain and our mind very quickly replaces direct experience with concepts about that experience. So we have a conceptual body. My first meditation teacher called it psychosomatic body or conceptual body. And this is made up of all our thoughts and feelings and memories and images of the body. So here we're making a gentle effort to sort of penetrate beneath that conceptual layer into the direct experience of body, the direct experience of physical sensation, what my teacher called body-body. So I invite you to take a moment to continue to connect the dots with all the sensations you can notice and feel all across the surface of the skin from head to toe. Including the hair on the top of your head, your hair follicles, all the sensations on exposed skin surface areas, contact with your clothing, contact with the ground, your feet on the ground, your body in contact with the chair and so forth. Whatever you can notice and feel all across the body. Such that you begin to feel enveloped in a field of exquisite sensate experience, aliveness. And you're really feeling the contact between the body and the space surrounding the body. We generally think of space as empty. But we actually know that the space that we live in is not empty. It's made of gases and so forth, it's energy. And we are energy, so the boundary between our body and the space surrounding us is apparently clear but also very malleable. But nonetheless, we can feel that and actually feel ourselves held by the space. And I invite you to imagine the space as benevolent. So you're being held by this benevolent space. And by really connecting the dots and feeling that entire external sensate field all across the surface of the skin from head to toe, we begin to feel enveloped in a womb-like structure of exquisite sensate experience that has a quality of benevolence, even loving kindness, allowing us to relax further and further. So in today's session, we're setting the stage for a deeply embodied approach to the practice. And as we progress through the nine days of the summit, we'll go further and further with that. And we'll realize the body as a portal into expanded states of consciousness. As always, with any meditation practice, if you find your mind wandering, that's fine. Just gently bring it back. We don't need to have a conversation with ourselves about that, that's actually counterproductive. We just, whatever was arising, we let it go and come back to the body. To actually feeling the body, feeling the sensation directly. I invite you now to begin exploring the internal landscape of the body. The internal sensate landscape of the body. Bringing your attention to whatever sensations you can notice within the body. It could just be the overall weight and mass of the muscles and bones. All the sensations related to the breath, the diaphragm contracting and relaxing. The abdominal muscles contracting and relaxing. The intercostal muscles between the ribs contracting and relaxing, helping us open and close the rib cage with each in-breath and out-breath. That entire flow of the breath, as the breath just flows in and out of the body of its own accord with that natural wave-like motion. We're just feeling all of those internal sensations as well as the external sensations of air flowing across the nostrils and/or putter lips. As we slow down and relax further, we may be able to notice our heartbeat, our pulse. I also invite you to be aware of any areas of discomfort in the body. And just allowing ourselves to feel whatever's there. We're fairly hardwired to chase comfort and avoid discomfort, chase pleasure and avoid pain, and that keeps us locked into a very mechanical way of living. So one of the great strategies for awakening is to lean into discomfort. And we're not looking for discomfort, but there's always going to be discomfort arising. All sensate experience arises across the spectrum, from pleasant to neutral to unpleasant. From comfortable to not so comfortable, pleasurable to painful and everything in between. That's just part of being alive in a body. So rather than living addicted to pleasure and comfort and actually living in fear or even terror of discomfort and pain, we can make the choice to just embrace the whole thing in an unbiased way. And we're not in no way, shape or form, we're not punishing ourselves, we're not looking for discomfort, it's just part of our experience. So I invite you to just be aware of any discomfort in the body and allow that to bring you further into the body. As we explore this internal landscape of the body, sensate landscape, we're activating what's called interoception or interoceptive awareness, which is based on the fact that the entire body is sensory, all the way down to the bones and including the bones, all containing neuronal cells connected to the central nervous system. The bones, the marrow of the bones, the musculature, connective tissue, all the vital organs, viscera, circulatory system, lymphatic system, all sensory. We are a living organism, all sensory. So breath after breath, feeling into the body as deeply as you can. Just with a sense of curiosity, openness, non-judgment, inclusivity. Just being curious about what's there and being willing to feel whatever's there. The internal landscape of the body is a vast somatic landscape, limitless, that we can explore and experience at an ever deeper, subtler and vaster level. And as we do, the deeper we go into the body, we'll begin to tap into a pre-existing internal resonance or coherence. And it'll actually cohere more and become more obvious, more vivid. Plus, it will feel an innate flow that's very nurturing, healing. And being tapped into this internal flow, this internal resonance or coherence through interoceptive awareness has been shown neuroscientifically to heal trauma, heal attachment wounds, deepen our resilience, enhance our muscle intelligence and so forth. And at the same time, by feeling the body deeply, the physicality of the body inside and out, ever more deeply, we're developing a powerful anchor that anchors us here in the present moment. And again, if you find your mind wandering, it's not a problem at all. Just gently bring your attention back to the body, dropping into the body ever more deeply with openness, curiosity, non-judgment, self-acceptance. And most importantly, curiosity, an almost passionate curiosity to know ourselves as deeply as we can. And the body is a wonderful portal. We can work with all the scent perception, but in some way, the body is the most accessible. And it has the advantage of creating this powerful anchor, anchoring us in the present moment. And by bringing awareness, benevolence, loving kindness into the body, we're also engaging in a healing process because as we know, our trauma is stored in the body, in the nervous system. So I invite you to just continue exploring the internal landscape of your body. Feeling enveloped in the external field of sensation, the contact between our body and the space around us. Feeling the benevolence of the space holding us. And then within that, feeling the safety to just go deeper and deeper into the body. Now, I do want to say that if exploring the body in this way becomes too difficult for anyone at any point or triggers something that feels unworkable, just open your eyes, shift your attention outwards to the environment you're in or shift your attention to another place in the body. Please take good care of yourselves and always do the practice within what Dan Seegul calls your window of tolerance or I know is often called the zone of resistance, so keep it workable for you. And to the extent that you're able, just continue exploring the internal landscape of the body, feeling into it as deeply as you can. As we all realize, we tend to live our lives pretty much up in our heads. Quite natural because we're very visually and auditorily oriented. We have very busy cognitive minds, so we tend to live up there. So the invitation is really to drop down through the neck and shoulders, upper body, mid-body, lower body, really drop into the body and really come home to the body. Having all the strands of attention, the dispersed strands of attention, bringing them back to the body, really dropping in and returning to our home. Which connects us not only with our body, but with our hearts and with the earth. Neuroscientifically, by emphasizing the body and really feeling the body as directly as we can, we're making a shift from what many of you may have heard of, the default mode network, which has its purpose, but in most modern humans is overactive and it's a noisy chatterbox part of the brain, ruminating about the past, fantasizing about the future, running commentary about the present. That noisy part of our brain that makes it difficult to meditate when we begin. By focusing our attention on the body, focusing on anything really, but the body is a very directly accessible object of attention. So by really focusing on feeling the body as deeply as we can, we're facilitating a shift from the default mode network to the task-positive network, which stabilizes our attention. And those two networks are mutually inhibitory to a degree. So the extent that we focus, join our mind with the body, the default mode network starts to go offline to a degree and the task-positive network comes online, stabilizing our attention. So we don't have to struggle with thoughts, we're not demonizing thoughts, we're not trying to get rid of thoughts, just by focusing on, our thinking minds are amazing as part of our experience. However, an overactive thinking mind can be an optical to healing and awakening and so forth. So by focusing on the body, we naturally, the thinking mind, the cognitive mind naturally quiets down and we're able to drop in ever more deeply into direct experience. Focused on actually feeling the sensations, the actual tactile physical sensations that make up the experience we call body, inside and out, from head to toe. I'd like to draw another distinction here. And don't worry about remembering all this because we're going to explore this on a daily basis for the next nine days. That distinction is between observing or witnessing our experience and direct feeling or direct experience. So to begin with, the ability to actually observe what's going on or witness our experience is very powerful and very profound. It's the beginning of awareness. I might use the analogy of a river. Before we start developing mindfulness and awareness, it's like we're in this river of sensate experience but without awareness. We're just in it. We're just in it without a lot of awareness. We have some, obviously, we always have some awareness, some mindfulness, but largely we're just kind of in this river of sensate experience without a lot of, you know, in a very kind of habitual way, without a lot of awareness. So the analogy would be that we step, come out of the river, get up on the riverbank and sit there and observe the river. Observe that river of sensate experience. And we can see the whirlpools and the eddies in the river and the hydrodynamics, fluid dynamics of the river, maybe things floating by. So we're observing, we have a sense of the watcher, the observer. That's great, that's the beginning and it's quite profound. And then as we stabilize our awareness, we can begin to let go of that sense of watcher. We can let go of the observer and drop into direct feeling or direct experience, a more non-dual approach to the practice. And that's like slipping back into the river and being in the flow of experience, feeling the wetness of the water, but now with awareness. Now with awareness. So let's take the breath for example. So I could be observing my breath flowing in and out, noticing it and have a sense of a watcher or a separate eye that's observing the breath, feeling the breath. And then I could relax that and just feel the breath directly, without the need for a feeler, without the need for a subject. Just feeling. And then I could relax even further into just being the breath, just being the breath. So that's another trajectory we're on here with this practice is moving from non-awareness to awareness with a sense of some separation of the observer, the watcher, and then relaxing that into just feeling directly and then pure being, pure presence. So just being the body. Just being a flow of sensate experience that we call the body. So I really encourage you to take this journey with us over these next nine days to watch as many of these amazing presentations and conversations of some of the most brilliant minds on the planet as you can. To join us for the daily meditations and the daily breathwork sessions. And in your practice and in your life over the course of these nine days, to every time you can remember, tap back into the body, just feeling present from head to toe and being curious about the internal landscape of the body and the natural resonance, coherence and flow that you can tap into by being present. A sense of pure being and pure presence. We're going to explore that further over the next nine days. And as you're exploring this approach to meditation, if you find this of great interest, you may be interested in the neurosomatic mindfulness course that we're offering during the summit and following the summit. So that'll be available to you. And my colleague, Michael Stone, who's going to lead a breathwork session in just a minute, is also offering a course on his neurodynamic approach to breathwork. So these resources are just there and available to you, but we're going to have these three live sessions every morning. And then these will be, if you miss one, these are recorded and they're going to be up on the website. So you can tap into them anytime, 24 hours a day, and they'll be available to you. And thank you for joining me in this meditation session this morning. And I'd like to introduce now my colleague, Michael Stone, who's my co-founder and co-producer. Welcome, Michael. Good morning.
Thank you, Fleet.
So Michael is the founder of the Neurodynamic Institute and the neurodynamic approach to breathwork, Breathwork Online. And Michael, longtime breathwork practitioner and teacher, trained in holotropic breathwork originally, Dan Grof's model. And then developed his model to bring it online and make it accessible to thousands and thousands of people online. And he's going to lead us in a session now of breathwork and I'm really looking forward to that. So take it away, Michael.
Thank you, Fleet. So yes, welcome everybody to the summit. And I'm very excited to have you all here and with the group of speakers that we've put together. And what I'm going to do right now is neurodynamic breath work is actually like the sessions are like two hours, there's an hour worth of breathing, there's a whole like, you know, 30-minute intro talk, there's a share group at the end and you know, there's a whole container that's set. So today what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you just a little taster session. And this, and the purpose of today is, so it's not neurodynamic breath work, is to allow you, especially if you've never done breath work before, is to allow you to get a sense of what it's like just to take a few minutes out of your busy life and just breathe for a few minutes. And we barely breathe usually. We take very shallow breaths, it's not very healthy. And so, you know, just to, just to get a sense of what kind of having some quiet time and internal time and with music. Music is an important part of the process, it does support quieting the mind. And so what we're going to do today is just play, you know, a short seven or eight minute music set and have you breathe to it. And then just kind of noticing, you know, what changes it makes in your mindset, if it relaxes you, if it changes anything. And so it's just, just a little taster of, of, you know, whole, you know, hour, hours worth of music with a, you know, more intense music trajectory. So to get started, just going to explain a little bit about the breathing technique. And what I'm going to have you do today, and this is not a technique that you would use in your everyday life, just walking around. This is specifically designed for breath work and you're going to be breathing in and out through the mouth, not the nose like we normally do in life, and you're going to be taking deep, full breaths. So as you breathe in, your belly will get pushed out. As you breathe out, it'll come back in. And you can just breathe at normal pace, you don't have to breathe faster, you don't have to push the breath, just taking full, deep breaths at a normal pace and in a way that's connected. So you're always breathing in or breathing out, so. Breathing fully and deeply in and out through the mouth in a connected way. And ultimately just kind of find a rhythm that just feels good to you, you know, that feels right. And even with just a few breaths, you'll start to feel your consciousness change a bit, you'll be a bit lighter in your being. And so again, the purpose of today is, is not to have a deep dive experience like a neurodynamic breath work, but to just get a taster and a sense of just what it's like to be in your body for five, six, seven minutes and breathe and just listen to music. So during, during the session, like, you know, two of the keys, and this is the same as in the longer breath work, are just trust and surrender. So you want to, so whatever wants to happen, you just let it happen, no judgment, no, even if nothing happens, there's no judgment about that. And, but just kind of noticing and just focusing on the breath. And also, so for instance, if your body wants to move a little bit as you start breathing, let it move. If your body wants to make sounds, let the sounds come out, you know, sometimes it feels like you're nice to just let a little sound on the out breath, like. And, you know, rather than deciding what you want to do, just noticing what your body wants to do. So if your body wants to move a little bit, let it move, if it wants to make sounds, let it do it. And, and you can do this just sitting up in your chair, or if you want to lay down, it's fine too. And there is going to be music, so you ideally want to listen to this in a way where you get good sound qualities. Like if you can grab it over your headset, that's perfect. You can also use earbuds or like really nice external speakers on your computer, but just, you know, whatever way you can get the best sound quality through, you know, through the computer you own or the phone. So at this point, let's, let's get rocking and rolling here. So if everyone can just close your eyes, take a deep breath and take your attention and bring it into your body. Just letting go of what happened earlier today. Letting go of what's going to happen later. And just bringing yourself into a quiet space. You're going to want to keep your eyes closed during this entire six or seven minute music set. Just being present with yourself. Just watching the breath. And now doing a quick body scan to see if there's any tension in your body, and if you can, just letting go of the tension, just visualizing the tension kind of evaporate into the universe, starting with your feet, then bringing your attention up through every part of your body. Maybe stretching a little bit. Being as relaxed as you can in this moment. And now bringing your attention to the breath and deepening the breath. Starting to take full, deep breaths in and out of the mouth. Just at a normal pace, so the belly expands on the in-breath, goes back to normal on the out-breath. And breathing in a way where there are no gaps, where you're always breathing in and out, taking full, deep breaths. But not putting any tension in your body, making it a full, deep but enjoyable breath. Putting all your focus on the breath. Breathing fully and deeply. Deeply and fully. Fully and deeply. Staying with the breath. Staying with the breath. In and out through the mouth, fully and deeply. And now just finding a rhythm that works for you, that feels good, that feels enjoyable, but staying with the breath. And again, you want to keep your eyes closed during this next bit of time. Breathing fully and deeply. Deeply and fully, fully and deeply. And in a moment, we're going to start the music and just letting the music wash through you. And allowing whatever wants to happen to happen and have a wonderful journey. And now, if you haven't done so already, slowing down the breath to a normal rhythm. Breathing gently now. Being in a place of stillness and presence, just keeping your eyes closed for a few more moments. And now, if it feels right, putting both of your hands on your heart. Feeling the breath pouring in and out of your lungs. Being with yourself in a very tender, open and accepting way. We almost never spend quiet time with ourselves, so just taking this opportunity to be with yourself. Sending yourself love, sending yourself compassion. Staying in this quiet space for a few moments longer. And then when you're ready, open your eyes, but when you open them, open them with a very soft gaze and a gentle energy. Just appreciating whatever you're seeing in your room, being present with it. And allowing yourself just to feel gratitude and just being alive, being able to be in the summit, to be able to feel things, to see things, touch and smell. And if it feels right, you can take this energy, this soft, gentle energy into your day with you as you watch all these amazing, amazing videos from these awesome speakers and thank you so much for participating in this breath work exercise.
Wow, thank you, Michael. Thank you, that was amazing, it was amazing. Yeah, wow.
And it's, it's really interesting that we just never take time for ourselves in life, like our minds are constantly rolling. And just taking a few moments out and even just, just breathing, it, you know, can really change your psychological state, even if it's a little bit, where you feel a little bit more relaxed and grounded afterwards. It doesn't take much. And we're just so busy in our heads during the day, kind of planning and judging and remembering. And we're almost never in the present moment, you know, as you said, like, our mind is always in the future, the past, our body is always in the present moment. And it's just wonderful to, even if every once in a while, just to connect to our body during the day, kind of see what's going on.
Absolutely. Yeah, breath is really our best friend and even one breath taken with awareness is a miraculous thing and a healing thing and a wonderful thing. So yeah, it's very accessible and I really enjoyed that, Michael. And I hope, thank you everyone for being with us today, whether you're with us right now live or whether you're watching the recording. But I hope the combination of the embodied mindfulness practice and the neurodynamic breath work is really setting you up for a beautiful day, when and wherever you're, you're accessing this. And so, Michael and I, we'd like to just share a little bit about the summit and what's going on today. And you know, first of all, I'm, I don't want to make this all about us, but I am feeling a little self-congratulatory. We've worked so hard to make this summit a reality and I'm just so excited to be making it available to all of you today. I know Michael is too. And Michael, I don't know if you can remember when, when we had that original conversation at a cafe on Dennis Beach near where you live. It was quite a while back, right? Do you remember when that was?
It was at least a year, yeah.
At least, at least a year ago. And you know, Michael and I, that was the first time we ever met in person. We're, we're probably an online group of people who do teaching online like we both do. And actually, a couple of our other group members. And actually, a couple of our other group members are on the summit, Anthony Avignano and Alex Howard and so forth. But at any rate, I always happened to be out in LA, and so I said, let's get together. And I had just finished the Psychedelic Assisted Psychotherapy Summit, which went really well and was kind of mind-blowing. And Michael said, well, I've always had this idea to do this much broader approach of not only psychedelics, but also including breathwork and meditation and shamanism and plant, and all the different ways people have been accessing expanded states. And I said, wow, fabulous, let's do it. And here we are. It was really, really, really exciting. So just to talk a little bit about what's coming up today, so the first two days, we're on day one. And both days, one and two, focus on psychedelics and psychedelic-assisted psychotherapy. And so, that's kind of mixed together for these first two days. So you have some presentations each day addressing both. And starting off today with the amazing Deepak Chopra, Dr. Deepak Chopra, who's one of the world's leading authorities on meditation, on consciousness, on Ayurveda, and who had his own psychedelic journey, part of his own awakening, which many, you know, when you get into this, you find out that many, many people have tapped. It's not the only vehicle, but many, many people, it's been a, at some point in their lives, it's been a catalyst in their own spiritual journey. So Dr. Chopra is interviewed by a wonderful friend and colleague, Gita Vaid, Dr. Gita Vaid, who is also a presenter and authority on psychedelic-assisted psychotherapy, but especially ketamine-assisted psychotherapy. And she is, yeah, she's also here on day one. And so, I had the pleasure of interviewing my colleague, Gita Vaid, about, you know, how ketamine is different from other psychedelics, you know, the unique properties of it and unique properties for psychedelic-assisted psychotherapy. And I had the pleasure of doing a retreat with Gita and others and Dick Swartz at Integrated Ketamine-Assisted Psychotherapy and Internal Family Systems, and it was really amazing. So such huge potential for healing. And so, Michael, I don't know if you want to jump in and talk about some of the other people that are on today. We have following, following Dr. Chopra, we have Rosalind Watts, a real pioneer in the world of psychedelic-assisted psychotherapy.
Yeah, I'd just like to talk in general about what the speakers are covering today. And you know, as you said, like ketamine is, has been really a breakthrough modality. I know, like, where I live in Los Angeles, there's a lot of different places that you can go to, to work with ketamine. And it's allowed many people with depression to have amazing breakthroughs that I know, you know, that I've met, that, you know, one man told me he'd never had a single day of feeling joy in his life for over three decades, and you know, until he got involved with ketamine-assisted therapy. And also, you know, one of the themes of today is how important it is, like the set and setting, when you're working in these expanded states, you know, specifically, obviously, today, it's focused more on psychedelics. And also, the preparation, having the session itself, and then also integration at the end. So several of our speakers talk about that. And there's also a talk about how, you know, working with these pathways, with these substances, can really allow you to have a different view of reality. Like to kind of clear some of the stuff out, some of the chit-chat from the ego mind, you know, where you're, as you said before, in meditation, also in psychedelics, when they do tests, they see that the default mode network is kind of quieted, and so it allows you to go to deeper levels of the psyche, and many times, see things from a very, very different perspective than you do in your everyday life. That's much more empowering and really supports you more in really leading the life that you want. And having a lot of insight into how you really do have power to work in your life and how many times people come through these experiences, seeing that where they thought that the universe was happening to them, that more, it's more like it's happening for them, which is a huge shift. So a lot of super interesting stuff today. That's going to come up in the sessions.
Absolutely. And psychedelics, as well as other expanded state experiences, have been shown to increase neuroplasticity. In other words, just our neural networks becoming a bit more fluid, which allows for the healing of trauma, and also profound shifts in perspective, to really see things and understand things in a different way. That can be very empowering and very, very liberating. And I'm glad you brought up the importance of of preparation, set and setting, and integration, because we really want to emphasize that everything we're exploring in this summit, all these access points to expanded states of consciousness, we really need, these are things human beings have been doing for millennia, all across every human culture on the planet, and we need to treat them with respect. And realize these are powerful modalities, and we really need to answer them consciously with good preparation. Make sure we're working with good teachers, good mentors, good clinicians, and so forth, good guides. And, you know, create the proper setting, and then have some access to practices for integration, like breathwork, like meditation and other. We're going to have a whole day focused on integration. I think it's maybe day eight or something like that of the summit. Whole day focused on integration. It's so important. So everything we're presenting here, we really invite everyone to, that, you know, this is, I mean, obviously, you know, I came to the 60s and 70s and I had my journey with all this stuff, and some of it was very conscious and sacred, and some of it was a little more on the, you know, that era, the partying side and, you know, but at any rate, really encourage us to approach all these modalities with tremendous respect. They're very powerful and can be huge potential for healing. And it's always very helpful to approach things with wisdom and good preparation and good knowledge. So I just want to mention, you know, just highlight some of the people around. So I mentioned Rosalind Watts a minute ago, a real pioneer in the research on psilocybin-assisted therapy. She's in the UK and really one of the pioneers, working with Robin Carhart-Harris and Dr. David Nutt, who's also a presenter on the summit. And amazing, my colleague, Ron Segal, one of our wonderful co-hosts, interviewed Rosalind Watts and Gita Vaid, who's a presenter today, also co-host, and she interviewed Dr. Segal. I had the opportunity to interview Christopher Timmerman, who's an amazing young researcher in the UK, who's again, one of the lead researchers in psychedelic-assisted therapy and the neuroscience of psychedelic-assisted therapy. And he also happens to be a musician, you know, a performing and recording artist. And I think we just have a new, I don't know what you call albums these days, we don't call them albums anymore, but he has whatever that coming out. And then my colleague, Dias Wondrea, also known as, who's a medical physician, and also known as Andrea Pennington. And she's an amazing medical healer, a physician, acupuncturist, expert in trauma recovery, a certified MAPS Psychedelic Assisted Psychotherapy facilitator, an African-American healer teacher who lives actually in France, and really an amazing human being and colleague that I'm so happy to be, have been connected to for a while now. And I don't want to leave anybody out here. And then, and then we have, finally, we have the Mithoffers. Michael and Annie Mithoffer, who are again pioneers in psychedelic-assisted therapy and psychedelic-assisted therapy research. Many of you are probably familiar with MAPS, which stands for Multidisciplinary Approach to Psychedelic Research, something like that.
I think association.
Association. It is the, it is the main body that's been supporting and driving research into psychedelic-assisted psychotherapy, which is, you know, ketamine is already legal to use in therapy, but hopefully soon, psilocybin and MDA will be made legal for therapy. And they're in FDA trials, and that's really been facilitated all these years through the MAPS organization. And actually, I heard, I think Australia has already now legalized it for therapy, MDMA and psilocybin. Anyway, the Mithoffers, very involved there. Michael Mithoffer, a physician, is the medical director for MAPS. And the two of them are also deeply trained internal family sisters, internal family systems practitioners. And Annie Mithoffer is a nurse, and the two of them have been guiding psychedelic-assisted psychotherapy sessions for a long time as part of these FDA clinical trials. So, I mean, just the level of knowledge and wisdom on day one of the summit here is just mind-blowing, and the conversations are so deep and so rich. And really happy that we have co-hosts to facilitate those conversations today, like my colleagues, Dr. Gita Vaid and Dr. Ron Segal. So it's going to be a fabulous day.
And yeah, and also just to remind people that if you don't get to all of them today, they're still going to be available tomorrow to watch.
That's right. You have 48 hours access to each day, so tomorrow there'll be another, I don't know, another seven or eight sessions that'll become available at 7:00 AM, and then you'll have 48 hours access to those. But you'll still have access to today's sessions for tomorrow. It's kind of a rolling thing like that. And, you know, there's a lot there, so if at some point you would decide that you'd really like to access all this at your own pace, we do make available the lifetime access upgrade package at a very, very reasonable price. And that's what really funds this whole thing. I mean, by doing these free summits, we're able to reach, you know, there's over 70,000 people registered for this summit right now. We think before the end, it'll be at least 80,000. And so, you're part of a huge community, worldwide community, enjoying this. And we're able to reach this many people and have them all access it for free. And what funds that is those people who decide and have the wherewithal to purchase the lifetime access upgrade. And it's at incredibly reasonable price of only $197. And not only you get all the content of the summit, yours for your lifetime, but you get three additional summits as a bonuses, three years of the Global Resilience Summit, which is another huge archive of wisdom and transformational technology. So at any rate, that's available to you. But the most important thing is please really engage, you know, watch as much as you can, and get active on the Facebook group with your fellow participants, and really engage with this community. And let's have a really profound journey together over these next nine days. I guarantee you. And the more, the more of the summit that you watch and enjoy, the more this will be true. But by the end of the nine days, you will not have the same brain, or really, in a sense, be the same, you'll be the same person, but you'll be transformed. Literally, we know this neuroscientifically, if you really watch and engage with this content over nine days, it's going to change your brain and change it in really positive ways and really liberating ways. So, you know, this summit itself is an access point to expanded states of consciousness and their profound potential for healing trauma, healing attachment wounds, for liberation, for awakening, or just, you know, improving the quality of our lives altogether, or whether you even think of the most profound states of what people call enlightenment or complete liberation, it's all possible here. And the summit itself is an access point, so really encourage you to engage as much as you're able to. Any final thoughts, Michael?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that, you know, part of the purpose of bringing together all these different access modalities to expanded states is so you can really see, you know, many of you may have just be curious and have no exposure to any of this stuff. Some of you may have done meditation but not anything else. And as you see these talks, you'll get a sense of, do you resonate with this? Like with, on meditation day, it's like, do you resonate with meditation? Maybe it's something you've never tried and you just kind of, I encourage you, rather than using your mind to figure it out, just to like be in your body and see, is this something that feels right for me to try to access some of the benefits of these states? And with every day, you know, with breathwork, same thing. You know, you might say, oh yeah, this really feels right to me, you know, I want to access these states without taking any substances, just doing it naturally through breath, let's give this a try, or whatever it is. So, you know, that's the reason that we pulled these all together, so you can really get a sense of what's out there and what's available to access these states. And really, the last thing that I want to say is just that being in these expanded states, really for many, many people, allows them to see their relationship to the world and the universe in a different way. Where they feel more oneness, they feel more connected, they feel more kind of one with nature. And this is something that we really need in the world today. And you know, right now, like the world, I mean, it's kind of, when you've seen politics and stuff, it's kind of turning more into an us versus them. And, you know, when you have and work with regularly these expanded states that really, for at least a vast majority of people dissolves, it's more like you can feel the oneness, how we're all on a very basic level, the same. And when you feel that connection, you would, you know, you would never like go out and destroy nature or go to war or whatever. It just wouldn't be right. So this is, to me, this is an important time in our history as human beings. And so, I just wanted to emphasize that really the importance of these access points to having these non-ordinary states, that where we can get beyond this kind of chit-chat thinking mind, where it's, you know, in the chit-chat thinking mind, it's more like a zero-sum game, so to speak, life. You know, if I take something, someone else suffers. It's like, you know, like there's no like, like the rising tide rises all boats, which is more where, you know, where you get to in these expanded states. So I'm just extremely happy that we're able to present it at this time in our history and have so many people that are interested. So thank you so much for participating and joining.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. I'm super excited and, you know, absolutely right. A strong part of our motivation in bringing, making this available to you all is about our own personal journeys for individual healing and liberation, but it's very much about our collective journey. And there's a reason why all this is sort of coming online now and becoming more available, because there's a huge collective need. And not only a huge collective need, we all see the challenges that are in our world, but a real inflection point of possibilities of global transformation. And we hope that we're making a small contribution to that here. So really jump in and enjoy. And just to highlight a few things coming up, tomorrow, we have the incredible holistic physician, Andrew, Dr. Andrew Wowe. We have pioneers in psychedelics like Dennis McKenna. We have the world's leading authority on microcysteine, James Fadiman. Yeah, I mean, just amazing things. And then we're going to have day three, it's all about breathwork. And if I can keep it track in my head anymore, which day is which, but oh, with them, days four and five are all about plant medicine and shamanism. And both days, there'll be some of both on both days, right? And then we have, we have, I don't remember the order, but we have a day on meditation with some of those profound meditation teachers on the planet, including A. H. Olmos, Adyashante, Motomam, and the others. We have a day focused on what is consciousness, with incredible minds like Ken Wilber and Peter Russell and John Verveke and Dan Segal. And then we have, we have a day, as I mentioned before, focused on integration. And we have a day focused on many of the alternative pathways into expanded states, like hypnotherapy, like music, like chant, and so forth. So it's just going to be an amazing, profound journey, and I'm just so excited and so happy that we could do this together, Michael. And just wish everybody a great journey. Be well, everybody. We'll see you tomorrow, same time, same channel. I'll be on at 10:00 AM Eastern Time with the more guided neurosomatic Michaelus. And Michael will come on at 10:30 AM Eastern Time with more neurodynamic breathwork.
With a different music too.
Different music, different music every day. And that was just really cool this morning. I loved it. And then Michael and I will do a little update, just to give you a sense of what's happening that day and what's coming up. So take care. Have a great day on the summit, everyone. Thank you, Michael.